Uh, pledge of flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice in common.
Can I please have a motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA 91A 32A?
Motion.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We will call.
For him, yes.
We'll all tie.
Dugga. Steer out?
For me.
For me.
Steer out.
Thank you.
Five thirty.
Well, we went from five to six, so five thirty is actually for compromise. Okay, so Michael.
Five twenty-five.
Our Wednesday, October 29th is going to be a five-thirtieth, false, five-thirty.
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 Sure.
That's why I care more than anything.
And that's going to be in the library where it's not air-conditioning situation anymore, right?
Probably.
Yeah. Five-thirty.
There you go.
Public comment? Jerry?
Um, I was curious about the public comment at the beginning and the part of meeting that I was intrigued by was prior vote MRI contract. Would there be any possibility for a public comment after you discuss that contract instead of asking any questions about it now?
How do you all feel about that?
I have no problem with it myself personally.
Do you have a problem putting it?
Prior to adjournment?
Trying to move, do you have a problem moving four down to, we'll make it ten and make adjournment eleven? Sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're welcome. Any others? Moving forward minutes from the last meeting.
Debbie, now has a correction.
Okay. Which page?
Page, page three.
Okay.
I couldn't, I had it on the wrong minutes and my page three where most of the place by Stephen Brown, the head of that Bay contract going up to bid for 2015, so then 2016.
Okay.
Let's see what I got. Thank you.
Hi, good.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me. Further down to page three, uh, just before the business administrator update that Stephen Brown stated that if there is none of better technology in existence, then the SAU should keep, it was, um, uh, no, no, Tyler Technology, not Back Bay.
Oh, okay.
And also on page four, I know he didn't adjourn at 1:33 PM. About 7:33 on the way.
I'm sorry, Mr. Coe? Mr. Tersi?
Oh, page three. About halfway up, this is 2015, 2015?
I see.
It'll be, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Any others? Having them seeing no more motion?
No motion.
All those in? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any reason why we can't do the non-public now too? Any corrections? Having none, getting none, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public of the joint board for July 30th, 2014.
Andy will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number six, lease of 18 Commerce Way. Yes, you may.
In your packet, you'll see that there was the original proposal that was presented to the board for our space, the SAU office. And at that, at our last joint board meeting, the board asked me to go back to Mr. Frisell and ask for a 1.5-year contract, I should say lease, and that's what you see on page eight as, as the 1.5-year proposal. The major difference between what you had seen originally and the 1.5-year proposal is a $1,200 increase on the annual cost.
Could you be saying 1.6 and not 1.5?
One and a half year contract. Good. So we, so that's, that's the major difference in the cost is the $1,200 increase with the one, one and a half year proposal, which comes down to $100 on our monthly payment.
Let's get it.
Ralph?
Would that be actually 2,400 because it looks like it increases $200 a month for six months there on the second year? If it were paying by the month, we'll go from 277493 to that second year or half year to 2974. So that, to me, well, six times two is 12 and one times 12 is 12 and it looks at 2,400 dollars.
Over the term, yes, you're correct.
Steve?
I don't like the way, where this is worded to start. I think it needs to be totally rewritten. We're talking about a one and a half year contract. It's listed at year six and seven, but the way that I read this, year seven, which is half of a year, looks like for six months, we're going to be charged $35,699.16 for six months, which is, that's just not it.
It does read annually and then it says monthly.
Like I said, I don't like the way this is worded, like the, uh, per Article three, I, I don't like the way that word is in, um, the way I read that, if they're not informed by a certain date, then we automatically re-up and I'm, I'm not comfortable signing something like this for the Wakefield taxpayers, especially if, if there is a withdrawal. So, and I'm looking, at year seven, we're, we're on the hook for that entire amount, I believe, annually, for six months. I, I don't like this contract at all. I don't like the way it's worded. I think it's going to create major problems. I think we, we would, I think we definitely would need a lawyer to take a look at it because the way I read it, for six months, we have to pay the $35,699.16.
Any other questions or concerns regarding the contract? Anne?
I'm just sure it would be prorated for the six months, Mr. Brown.
Well, I'd like to have a confirmation of that before this contract is signed.
Okay, so, I'm, yes, Ralph?
It does look like it says till June 30th, 2016, so they're calling it year seven. They're specifying that it only lasts until June 30th, but they're saying year seven is a $35,699 annually.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from the joint board is that they would like clarification that that is a one-year, six-month, and that it's not the complete $35,699.16. If we could verify that that six months is going to be at a rate of 297494 for six months, they would like to have that before moving forward.
Ralph?
Um, could they also explain the increase, I mean, the, the original lease, you know, we're looking at year six at 277493 monthly, so what is the purpose of raising it to 287493? And what is the purpose of raising it to 297493 for the six months? Why can't it remain at 277493?
Did you have conversation?
Yeah, just lack of commitment. Not to mention that the current office was completely designed for our intention to be an SAU office in there, so he might have to redesign that office if he needs to lease it out again.
So, yes, Mr. Brown?
Just because it was designed for an SAU, that doesn't fall back on, on the school district that we have to incur that cost of moving forward. I mean, that's, okay.
There doesn't seem to be much grease with this, really.
And I want to make sure there's no automatic, um, re, uh, well, let me hear it. Renewal, automatic renewal without specific from the SAU that we're going to, to renew as of, um, June 30th, 2016, that ends this rental.
Can you give us a specific, I want to, I want this, I want to be able to know the specific lines that you're concerned about so that we can be very specific.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm having a problem with it. It's on the lease, it's under per Article, it's near the center, just above the rent, per Article three, section 3.5. Basically, that whole paragraph, I just want to make sure that Wakefield is not going to be on the hook for one dime of this lease after June 30th, 2016.
So, in looking at it, the dates have changed, Mr. Brown, but the wording from the last contract has not. So the, did you have the same concern when we did the contract last time, or is this arisen now? Because other than the dates, the wording hasn't changed.
Well, my, my, really, my concern is, we're, we're talking withdrawal. I want to make sure that the town, the taxpayers of Wakefield, if in fact there, a withdrawal moves forward, that the taxpayers of Wakefield are protected and the Wakefield taxpayers will not be on the hook for one dime of this lease after June 30th, 2016.
Okay, Mr. Fogg?
I was just, um, I'm just concerned, Steve, is it does seem if somebody forgets to pick up the phone on the, on the final day, the two-month prior notice, if it's just an oversight, a mistake or something, the town of Wakefield is bound by this contract to pay for the, the rest of the term. So, it's just clarification of words and commitment and, and things like that.
Questions or comments from anyone else on how to move forward?
It's been presented to the board tonight for consideration of approval.
Okay, so do we have a motion to?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we do not approve this contract.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. I'm writing as fast as I can, pardon me. All those in favor of not approving this contract?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion fails? Having said that, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I would also like to assure Mr. Brown that annually means the 12 months, even, there's no doubt with my mind that.
But why, why doesn't it say till June 30th?
Look, the word annually is there, and annual is 12 months.
I don't, I, you don't see any till June?
I will, I will second what Anne's saying. It does say annually and it says monthly. It specifically is on there in black and white that it says, if you stay the year, this is what you pay, if you stay the month, this is what you pay.
I have a motion on the table?
I'll make the second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
If you look at the original contract, it does not say till June 30th. The new one does specifically state till June 30th, 2016. And on behalf of the Wakefield taxpayers, there, there needs to be clarification on this contract.
Anne? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tersi?
And the reason for the new wording of till June 30th, 2016 is to, to indicate the half year where the original contract and the one we're currently in is for a full year, which is January 1st to December 30th. So that's why it's noted in there until June 30th, 2016, that's that one, 1.5 year.
I have a motion on the table to approve contract?
For the board?
Yes.
We still need clarification. Is it annually or is it going to be for six months?
Mr. Fogg?
I think also in a past meeting, we discussed the idea of contracted services, and this was under the list of contracted services, and it doesn't seem as if this even went out to bid. Substantial amount of money. We have policy that if it's over three to $5,000, things are supposed to be going out to bid, and it was listed under the contracted services.
I think they also made a comment that the amount of time, effort, money, and everything to move an SAU office, to redesign an SAU office, change everything, change the networking and everything for what could be a year until we go out and bid it again, is, it's not, it's not reasonable.
Andy?
We're going to be spending more money if we try to relocate than just sticking where we're at. Because you're going to revamp a whole new building, we're going to have to find a space, you have to put all new services in, it's going to cost a whole lot more money than what we're looking at here.
Okay, so Ralph?
Clarification, we're just going to ignore the policy as a part of the board.
When we had that conversation, there was a number of different contracts that we discussed that, you know, and the words when feasible came into play. We agreed that we were going to look at that, this lease for a year and a half because of the possible, possible withdrawal of the SAU. There was no discussion whatsoever about putting this out for bid. We all decided jointly, and I don't remember what the vote is, so quote me, that we were going to go with this option, Mr. Tersi was going to bring us in the new lease, and we were going to go from there. So I don't know why we're bringing up sending this out to bid, all decided.
Okay, so I'm going to move the question. Hope she gets to, yes, Mr. Brown?
Um, the minutes that we just approved, um, from July 30th, 2014, page three, um, about a quarter of the way down, motion was made by Norman Joyner, reconsidered the last vote, this motion was seconded by Brandy Banks for discussion. If reconsidered, then all contracts should go out to bid for the 2015, 2016 year. Each contract for 2015, 2016 to be bidded upon separately.
Nora?
That's the vote.
And there's the vote.
Right, and we also agreed Tyler Technology, I don't see it in here, um, we, we agreed Tyler Technology was not going out, and I believe we agreed, the SAU.
To the bottom of the first paragraph.
Was not.
Bottom of the first paragraph?
Right, there was, we were re-agreed, it was not going out to bid because it just was not.
At the very top, it says SAU and Tyler Technologies have developed a good working relationship. The joint board, board voted on the motion, no, no, yes, no, yes, no, no.
Right, but then, then there was a reconsider, reconsideration vote that followed that immediately. And so that changed, that vote that I just read changed that. Now, if, to Mrs. Joy's point, yes, further down on page three, it says that Tyler Technology, um, uh, Ralph Fogg made a motion, they have Tyler Technology contracts go out to bid for the 2015, 2016 school year. There was no second on the motion, therefore that motion to put Tyler Technology failed for a lack of a second. It's all right here, it's in black and white, that it was supposed to go out to bid.
Anne, bottom line, it is not feasible to look for a building for a year and a half. Mr. Brown?
It is feasible to make sure that the Wakefield taxpayers are protected in this contract. That is feasible. And Wakefield taxpayers, I'm not protected on that contract.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Yes, Ralph?
So we'll ignore the minutes that we just approved and ignore what it says in the minutes, what we just approved, and ignore the fact that, that we all, at that time, decided each contract to be bidded separately.
Mr. Tersi?
It's very clear to me, leaving that meeting, that I was to ask Mr. Frisell for a one-and-a-half year contract to bring to this board for consideration and approval at this meeting. And that's what you have in front of you.
Yes, Mr. Fogg?
I think we asked at that meeting to have you negotiate terms of the contract. We see that Mr. Frisell was even open to negotiate. I believe that was, that was part of that discussion. I don't think that we had said we wanted a contract brought here and approvable tonight at this meeting. We didn't even know, I, I know I didn't get any information whether or not Mr. Frisell was even open to giving us a one-and-a-half year contract until I received this package.
Nora?
Ralph Fogg placed a motion for the board to table the acceptance of the new lease until it is known if Mr. Frisell will accept a one-and-a-half year lease and what the terms of the lease will be. Anne, who was second in this motion, the joint board voted as follows. That's what we asked Mr. Tersi to do. We brought back the revised, we did not ask him to go out to bid. Can we please move the vote?
It's the one-and-a-half years.
A motion to approve the revised lease for one-and-a-half years at 18 Commerce Way.
I made a motion, that's right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Number seven, IT bids.
That's good today, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
So we had, we put IT services out, out to bid, posted RFP as we do, and we had one, one company come to the sidewalk as well as submit a bid, that was Back Bay Networks for $133,600. This is the exact cost that we're currently paying, it did not go up a cent based on their bid. We're looking for the board's approval of this contract to see, should save this bid.
Where, where, where did the bid go off?
We posted it in the papers, um, we posted it in the, um, maybe the, what's the paper we posted, um, for the Wakefield?
It should have been in the Carroll County and.
Carroll County and the Bennett and Foster's, as well as our website, that's where we posted our bids.
And the SAU website or each individual website?
SAU websites, but however, the, there's links directly from our, from the school websites to those, to our website.
All right. Doug?
I'll make a motion to approve this contract.
A second. We've got it.
Mr. Brown?
Go back to the minutes. There was discussion at this meeting, or at the last meeting, I'm sorry, as to professional relationships and why this didn't go out to bid in the first place. And it just seems mighty peculiar that Back Bay is the only one who came back, because I've actually done this myself, we're telling, and they tried to do the same thing with a professional relationship, we won't get into that. I personally called four chambers of commerce and nine IT companies, and we had IT companies coming out of the woodwork to try to put a bid in. I, I have a real problem with this professional relationship, which is right on page three of the minutes again, and this same so-called bid coming back.
Since it was put out to bid, and we followed what the board wanted to do last time, unless there's straight-out accusation or something, I think we should go ahead with the vote.
Ralph?
Does the policy say competitive bids? I believe it does. And how can a single bid be considered competitive?
We need to tread lightly on that. Mr. Brown?
If the, if it was put out to bid, notifications were sent out, we're following the policy. If only one company came back and no one else did, we're following the policy. Otherwise, like, like Mr. Steer said, accusations are being made, we need to go forward. I told the superintendent, has put those things out, I haven't said.
We have a motion on the table to accept the IT contract, and Doug made the motion, Andy second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Uh, number eight, MRI contract. Can you speak to that?
I can, yes. What you have, also have in your packet is a contract from MRI Consulting Services. This is a contract that, that will provide us with Mr. Castle as a business administrator in training, as well as the support from MRI consultants, particularly two senior MRI consultants, Mike O'Neil and Mike Everdame. And this, this lays out basically all the, the services that are provided and the costs pertinent to those services. And I, I am recommending to the joint board that this contract is approved, particularly with the work that we've done with MRI at this point, as well as, I'm very happy with the support that they're providing to Mr. Castle as well.
Questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
Is this, um, is this going to be a per month or is it a flat fee in the budget?
It's, it's, it's a flat fee, monthly, monthly payment.
Page 32, Steve, it gives you the fees and the charges set out by how it will be paid.
Well, I got that, but how was it in the budget? I didn't get my package, so.
Um, it's in the budget as, um, go ahead.
It's in your, your fiscal year, your fiscal year 16 proposed budget as a contracted service of $96,000.
And is that what, some of these fees come out through for twelve months?
Yes. The only additional fees that we might incur is for the senior consultant's mileage, or if we're asking for special projects above and below 40 additional support hours of the senior consultants throughout the, throughout the month. And those support hours actually are labeled all over minutes, so if we don't use the full 41 month, it accrues to the next month. And the intent is to wean those support services off as the year moves on.
Any other questions or concerns?
So, Mike, how long is the contract for?
Twelve months, sir.
Twelve months, so it's been probably twelve months right now.
It, it actually extends through the remainder of this school year and all of next year.
So is that 15?
It started October 1st and ends June 30th of 2016.
Pardon me. Ralph?
And I think as this discussion happened, um, And I think as this discussion happened over this service, we can ask to terminate the contract with a 30-day notice if Nathan's able to accomplish our needs on his own, and he's comfortable with going that way.
With no additional costs, and MRI as a bid can do the same if they feel necessary.
I'll make a motion to approve this agreement with MRI.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Moving to number nine, 2015-16 proposed budget. If you came in late, there is a revised budget that Mr. Tersi has that you will want to make your notes on.
You have to say what's a piece.
Yes, it has the potential to tell me down if it can be. I'm going to ask, are we going to go line by line?
What I'd like to do is highlight some of the areas, but we can go line by line.
Okay. Does anyone have a preference on how they would prefer to have it done? Anne?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page tonight. We're just doing a presentation, and we're not approving this budget, we're going to do it next week or so, because Milton does have to go back into a meeting after this, okay?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So, all you, Mr. Tersi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You'll see that, presenting you your SAU budget for the first time this evening, and some of the key points that I want people to realize as to what some of the budget numbers are based off of. And I included in the revised budget this evening, the backup documentation to the numbers as well, we even have that available, plus we had to make some changes between the time the packet went out and today, so what you currently have are the current explanations of the current numbers. So, you'll see where the percentage increased, and I'm not going to go through all of that specifically this evening as to each individual, but I'm going to highlight some of those areas for you. As we go through the lines, you'll be able to see in your package for review for next meeting where all of those percentages are part of. So, overall, all the salary increases you'll see in there are based on what I did as a three-year cost of living adjustment average, it came out to 2%. So, in the proposed budget, there's a 2% salary increase for the SAU staff. Health insurance that's in here is based on a 9% estimated increase over '14-'15. We've been in conversation with our health insurance provider, and they're saying anywhere between 3.5% and 7.5% that it might come in at. We should know that the first week in November, Mr. Castle, I think, and I believe November 5th, we'll have those numbers finalized, so if it comes in lower than the 9%, those health insurance costs will be decreased from what's in the proposed.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes?
You said health insurance, why not by 9%?
We're estimating the 9%.
Oh, you're talking about line 23, 25, 21, 110?
Yeah, where you see the...
Yeah, you're showing it went down by $6,800?
That's correct, and you'll see a major decrease in there because I've taken the business administrator's salary out and put it into contracted services, and we take the business administrator's salary out, it also includes benefits, FICA, as well as retirement.
Thank you very much.
Your retirement rate for teachers is 15.67%, and support staff is 11.17%. So, that's what some of the retirement rates in the proposed budget, we'll see, are based on. Our workman's comp is based on a 7% increase, that's for a 2% increase over salaries, as well as an estimated 5% increase, totals of 7%. And it says in here that the unemployment was brought in at a 7%, however, we just found out our rates are at 9%. That's why there is an increase in your unemployment cost compared to the budget that went out at the end of last week. And what's in here is the rental of the facility, and based on tonight's vote, those numbers are accurate. Your technical services were based on the bid from Back Bay that was approved this evening, so those numbers are accurate. The only additional monies in that line are $6,000 for a web designer. I'm putting that in there because currently, our website needs quite a bit of work, in my opinion, and we need somebody with the expertise that can design websites, as well as help maintain those websites. We have staff in-house, both at the SAU and within the schools, that can post, but can post on the website, however, the actual design piece is a skill set that we do not have within the district. So, we're looking at an estimated cost to redesign the web at $6,000.
Ralph?
Have you looked into a service provider called Virtual Town Hall?
No, I haven't at this point. The reason why is because with the $6,000, if that was to be approved, we'd be going out to bid for that, and I don't know if Virtual Town Hall is an organization.
I believe they have startup costs, might help you Jerry, $3,500 or $4,500.
They did have a startup cost, but I didn't think they were going school district stuff. I thought they said they were only going municipal and town at that point.
The reason I ask is because I believe with Virtual Town Hall, there's a link to the school system, and it's pretty in-depth. So, you may have a web service, a site service, I don't know if Milton has Virtual Town Hall or not, but Wakefield certainly does now, and because of that link, maybe you can utilize that, I'm not sure.
Can you keep that in your bank?
It's called Virtual Town Hall? And is it, it's an organization that provides services, or is it?
It's a, they call it Virtual Town Hall, and they do, they provide services to many municipalities.
Maybe Mr. O'Connor can shoot me that contact information.
Sure.
Teresa, the town administrator of Wakefield, would also have information.
Mr. Brown?
Is the $6,000 for the web designer, or is that a one-time shot?
Yes, sir.
Total, $6,000?
That's an estimated cost. That's just to get it redesigned and provide support to make sure we can maintain it. That's where our in-house skill set would be able to come into play, is maintaining it.
So, we'd have to offer some training to someone?
Yes. It'd be to our current, the current people that are putting information on our website.
Mr. Fogg?
Unless it was able, if it went out to bid and the contractor came in and provided the training, you know, maybe that would take care of ducks. It all depends on what the contractor has to offer.
Moving forward?
And as I mentioned earlier, when Mr. Shute asked the question, the business administrator's salary and benefits were removed, and we added a new line called contracted services and put the $96,000 in there. We were able to save based on that move, so. Any questions on that?
Just the savings is, we're looking at the VA's line of $80,339. The additional $16,000 probably comes from health benefits, maybe?
In hiring, yes, in health benefits, but as well as in retirement. So, what we're looking at, if we had the salary maintained at the $80,000, the total cost of that position was over $100,000. So, you're bringing it in as contracted services is lower than that total.
Thank you.
So, moving forward, are you asking, you're asking if we have any questions, but yet we've also been asked to be sure, because Milton has to go back into a meeting, are you asking that we keep our questions until next week?
No, but I just don't want to get, you know, emotions in this and act, because that wasn't the intention of the meeting.
My point on the question, and any of the information that I just provided you, the board hasn't had an opportunity to see any of the backup paper work for these lines, and it might answer some of the questions that you had.
Okay.
So, I would recommend that you go and review the backup, because you'll see that there's specific breakdowns for the total line item in the backup documents, and shows you the percent increases in there and so forth. And I apologize for not having that last week, but we weren't prepared to get to you last week, plus we knew we had to make some adjustments. So, overall, our increase is, where do we have that at, Mr. Castle? 1.74% increase from last year. I'm sorry, from this current school year.
This budget is one?
What's proposed is a 1.74% increase over this current year's budget.
It went down from the 1.9 on the revenue.
I'm sorry, yes.
It's fine. In other words, we're only seeing a $15,946 increase over last year.
Right.
Thank you.
Can I just have a little clarification on the professional development? I think I was looking, professional development had been like $4,090, and now we're back down to, yeah, $1,000?
Correct, we dropped that last year to $1,000. I also want the Joint Board to keep in mind that we're operating on the default budget this year, and we had to absorb an additional $7,200 from the proposed budget.
Oh, that we cleared, that you took those pinpoints?
Correct, so we had to reduce this year, so those lines, you can see, so what you're seeing is what we had reduced last year was down to $1,000.
Mr. Fogg?
I thought professional development funding came in via grants.
Not all of it, no.
Not all of it? Do you know what the percentage is of it?
No.
You think it's 80%?
No, the SAU staff doesn't take advantage of the grant professional development. Most of the grants are written specifically for staff in the schools. However, in the administrators' contracts, there is, there's lines for professional development.
I have another question in regards to the automobile. In the automobile, last year, we had had a $500 repair and maintenance, and this year it's down to $50. That's not even going to cover an oil change, so my concern is why is that so low? I'm looking at 123254301.
Where are you?
Page one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Repair and maintenance of vehicle?
Because I looked at our actual 2014, and we didn't spend any money on that repair and maintenance of vehicle.
You didn't have a single oil change done on the car, or tires, or any, there was no maintenance? Does that cover registration on it too?
I believe it wasn't, no, doesn't include inspection in repair and maintenance of vehicle.
I guess I'm concerned, the vehicle is aging, it's being utilized, I just didn't know if we, do you feel that that's a safe number to put in there?
I do, because we don't, based on the actual, as well as I know we're not doing up to 5,000 miles on that vehicle a year.
Oh, you're not? Okay.
I'm comfortable with that based on the actual.
Okay, and then, I asked you this question on the phone today about, I just want to make sure that I understand correctly, I wanted to know what the repercussions of taking a line that has a dollar in it and moving it to zero, and what that means to us, and in the next year's budget, what are the consequences of doing that?
And so, I'll take, for example, like the technical coordinator line, that's a position I know we're not going to need, or we're going to ask for, therefore, we don't need to keep a dollar in that line, because we wouldn't have to shift monies into that line mid-year or any point during the budget season. So, we zeroed that out, knowing we're not going to need to use that line. Same thing with SIG FICA, SIG FICA is over, so we're not going to need that line anymore, so we put it to zero. Same thing with SIG Retirement, Superintendent Search, we wouldn't need any monies in there, so we put it to zero.
What about auto insurance? We don't pay auto insurance? It's at a dollar, but we don't have a policy?
I believe, I know we have a policy, I would have to find out specifically where the SAU vehicle is insured for.
Just a question, we're unsure. And then, new computers and network equipment and new furniture got put to zero. What if we have a computer that crashes, and we zeroed out the line, and we can't move money to get a computer? Like, say Kathy Biggs' computer crashes, and she needs a new one, and we zero out the line, how do we compensate that?
Right, that should be a dollar.
Okay. Yes, Steve?
Technical services, 103835, but didn't we just approve a contract for 1336?
Yeah, that's $29,765.
Look at the technical services in the packet. Our alert now, our blackboard system is $2,677. And on Back Bay, the SAU contribution is $95,158, to total that amount, 103, and, I'm sorry, and that also includes the $6,000 for the web design, which comes out to 103835.
Okay, so the difference is between what each district pays?
Yep. As an SAU, we pay 70%, and it's split based on each district's apportionment of the SAU budget.
Okay, so...
The remainder.
70% is paid by the SAU, and then 15 each?
No, and then 53% for Wakefield, and 47% for Milton, it's based on your, it's based of the 30 remaining.
Fifty-six, right?
Remains.
Fifty-six.
It's 53.
Okay. Ian?
Were you just going to confirm that? Yes. Okay.
I need a little bit of clarification, just on that technical services line, that is the Back Bay contract, am I right?
What did you say, Ralph? Is that 70 or something?
I know what you said, yeah. I understand that part, I just wanted to make sure we were talking about Back Bay. So, when we go back up to the technical coordinator, that's not Tyler?
No, it's not. That was a position that was in the district, I don't know how many years back, that's been, it's been prior to hiring Back Bay, so that position no longer exists and had it for years, that's why it's at zero.
Where is Tyler represented in this budget?
Tyler, let's see, maintenance agreements. Yep, it's under maintenance agreements, for $11,899, plus a 5% increase on that, $12,000 to $103.95.
What page are you looking on?
It's on, one is Tyler Maintenance Agreement up top. ADS is Tyler Technology.
ADS is Tyler Technology.
Correct.
But that's still not on this sheet.
Maintenance Agreements, yes.
Yep, I see that. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns tonight?
The top, the top of page two, the supplies and supplies, we just based that on what we spent.
It's based on our actual.
What's covered under that, just general?
That's basically all of our supplies for the SAU. That's basically all of our supplies for the SAU, includes all of our paper costs, which actually went up this year. We'll produce some more information on the SAU than we have in the past. So, that's why you're also seeing an increase on, um, our tone costs as well. Also an increase in postage. Thank you.
Any other questions for this evening?
Yeah, um, I'd like a clarification on that, um, the vote on the, um, SAU office. Are we going to get a clarification, what, till, uh, June 2016 and whether it's either annual or monthly before the contract is signed?
I believe that the board, to the best of my knowledge, confirmed that seven of us believe that it was...
And would have seven of you are wrong.
Then we'll have to...
Well, I, I see, that's where I have a problem with, is the Wakefield tax base should not be on the hook if seven of you are wrong. Why can't we get clarification, what it means, before the contract is signed?
Paul?
Uh, we did approve it, but we probably could have got that clarification, couldn't we? Just ask that question?
Just a question.
It is just a question.
I believe it's in contract, but I'll ask the question.
Thank you. Is that suffice, Mr. Brown? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And the specific question is, we're going to be, it's based on...
Well, I would, I would like to clarify, an explanation on as to what, you know, is it either six months or is it annual or is it monthly? And I just want to make sure that that contract ends June 30th, 2016 and releases the town, the, the town in Wakefield from any further expense to that contract.
Master, can that be put into that contract? Whether Wakefield can be held not liable after 2016?
No, I don't...
It has nothing to do with...
No, but you can cloud, you can get, you can get...
You can clarify that it's, that we're making the monthly payment, not the annual payment and that for six months, we're only responsible for six months worth of payment, not 12.
Right.
All right. We have moved public comment to now.
Uh, yes, sorry, my public comment was regarding the MRI contract they approved. And I guess we're looking to them for professional services and professional guidance, but I have a couple of, kind of had a couple of slight problems, uh, with whether or not they are up to the task. I know that we had a discussion that our Wakefield School Board, the trust fund that was voted on and approved and was supposed to be funded, um, by July 10th, 2014 and still hasn't been funded up until this point. It seems to me that if you have someone like MRI that's doing your business administration work, they would have known that there was a deadline on having that done. They had 10 days from the end of the fiscal year to get that money transferred and to get the, and to get the funds set up.
Wouldn't you like us to answer that question for you?
Well, I did, I just, so, um, uh, you know, it just makes me wonder why they didn't let us know. And the other one was the, uh, the school forms that are supposed to be sent out so we can get our tax rate set. Um, we need to try and get our tax rate set. I don't know, uh, it was 2008 or 2009, we had a delay on that in Wakefield and, uh, we wound up going out and securing a million dollar line of credit to pay our bills because our, our property tax bill was also late. And we had to pay the maintenance on that for, uh, three or four months. It was a pretty significant amount of interest to maintain a million dollar, uh, uh, line of credit to pay our bills. And these forms should have been filed with this, with the Department of Revenue and Administration on the first of September and as of today, they haven't been filed with the DRA. Uh, and I know that the town of Milton, their dashboard just says that they, they check with the DRA on Monday and as of Monday, the forms haven't been filed on behalf of, uh, the town of Milton either. Uh, but the other minor problem I have with it is when you outsource these services, now these are light problems and timing and whatever the situation winds up being, I'd say 13, I'd say 35, 13 calls of violations, uh, and for every week, for instance, that that fund wasn't funded every week, that that hasn't been done, that the, the school board, the treasurer, all these people are, are considered to be in violation. Um, if we have that and people are violation, the state can come in to elected appointed board and do something about it as your, being our representatives, that we elected now, you outsource that to a private business and they make a mistake, all they have to do is say, "Books, we screwed up" and the state has no, um, recourse, the town has no recourse, no, and, and, and... I just, like I said, I just, I just have a little, a little bit of a question that we've done pretty well in the past, having a business administrator and superintendent doing these and monitoring these and pretty for the most part getting into the timely fashion, but now that we've got, uh, a high-powered group like MRI coming in, you know, we missed the, we missed the July 10th deadline to get a trust fund, um, established and get the money transferred into it and we've missed the deadline for getting the, um, forms filed with DRA by almost two months. So, if you guys want to put your eggs in their basket, I mean, that's fine with me, but as long as you know what the services that we're getting from them, so that's, that's my thing.
Mr. Toshi, could you remain and speak to that for me, please?
I can speak to, they, they go hand in hand, quite honestly. And the reference to the trust fund in Wakefield, um, that, those monies need to be requested 10 days after, uh, the surplus has been approved and surpluses are approved when a DOE 25 is signed. So, our Wakefield actually has the DOE 25 to sign this evening, so we have 10 days after the approval of that DOE 25, which is approval of your surplus funds. Uh, we have 10 days to ask for those from the trustees and we had it designated on our trust fund list to request those come October 31st originally anyway, knowing that the DOE 25, when it needed to be submitted. So, they go hand in hand. Unfortunately, we're a little later going in on the DOE 25 because of unforeseen circumstances. We did lose our business administrator and we needed to basically catch up. Uh, so, I don't, I'm, I'm actually, I feel fortunate that MRI has put us in the place where we are currently.
Any other public comments? Lou?
I, I guess my question is, you keep referring to Mr. Castle as administrator in training. Does that mean that eventually he's coming to work with us or MRI is just training him to be one of their administrators and what is going on with that?
Michael?
The intent is for Mr. Castle to be our employee and currently is in training with MRI, uh, so we actually have an option as to whether or not we want to continue working with Mr. Castle, but I do not foresee any reason why that's going to happen in my current work as a Mr. Castle. So, right now, we've hired him on as a MRI, uh, business administrator in training with the intent that he can hire an employee.
Okay, well, I don't think that was ever me clear.
Priscilla?
What made you decide to go with MRI as opposed to hiring an EIA?
Go ahead.
That's because the pool is extremely shallow for business administrators and we needed somebody to come in, um, right away. Uh, that's where MRI came in and, um, currently because of such a shallow pool, this gives us sort of the best of both worlds where we have a business administrator that's in considered, in training, that's in our office a minimum 40 hours a week with MRI support.
And I was just wondering if he is, if you're planning to have him an employee, why would you do the rest of this year and the entire next year under MRI? Why wouldn't you just finish out this year and then have him be an employee of the district of the next year's budget?
Because I want to make sure that, uh, Mr. Castle, as well as the SAU, is comfortable with the business administrative services and has the skills to move forward without the assistance of a outside consulting group.
And if he decides to move on, MRI will replace him with somebody under that contract?
According to the contract. I don't believe, there is stipulation in there if Mr. Castle decides to move on. However, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Castle, but I don't see that happening.
I just wondered what would happen if he did. You never know what surplus...
We would continue with MRI services.
That's my question. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I, I think, um, one other, not to do with the VA. Um, we have not put in our money that was left over from our surplus into the trust fund. Is that because of the 25 in our district also? And as you say, yes. When do you see that happening?
That's, um, we're hoping to have that signature this evening as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Accept a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Want to first or second?
I'll second.
Steve is first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7/27?